...Villa Park Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We're going to do a roll call. Commissioner Jarrett.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
Harlowsky.
Here.
Bellows.
Here.
Hessler.
Jackson.
Here.
And we have a quorum. I don't know if there's a couple more members that may join us. If they do, we'll just read their names into the record at the time. The next agenda item is approval of minutes for December 10th, 2015. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes for December 10th?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of December 10th, 2015.
There's a motion. Is your second?
I'll second.
Second. Any questions or comments on that motion? If not, we'll vote by roll call. Jarrett?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Harlowsky?
Yes.
Bellows?
I have to pass.
Okay. Jackson?
Yes.
Okay. I have to take a pass on that, too. I was not present as well. Okay. Moving on to the public hearing for this evening, we have one. It's petition PG-15-0009, subdivision of one lot into two lots and conditional use for an automobile service station and car wash at 150 East North Avenue. Petitioner is Bluestone Single Tenant Properties. We'll be following our public hearing procedure tonight. And petitioner, as you make your -- get ready to start, please state your name and address for the record, and then we'll have you sworn in. Thank you.
I have a brief presentation.
Okay.
You have a next speaker? Yeah. Good evening. My name is Rick Clayes. I'm the managing partner of Bluestone Single Tenant Properties. Our address is 400 North Michigan Avenue, Suite 800, Chicago, Illinois 60611. Now, I'll try to whip through this presentation. It's generally my objective to introduce the property and the development, tell you a little bit about it, rather than stand up here and rattle on for a long time. I prefer to just respond to questions, but I wanted to just spend a few minutes here, 15 minutes, going through the project, hitting the highlights. So with me here this evening is Steve Shanholdser from Manhard Engineering, which is our civil engineering firm. And hopefully down in the parking lot, we just left each other from a restaurant here in town, is Peter Lemon, our traffic engineer. I could answer any detailed questions you might have about access to North Avenue or So my firm is in the business of developing single tenant properties, which means it could be anything from a one acre site to a 10 acre site. But we do do multi-tenant strip centers or power centers or regional malls. We focus on regional and national tenants to build ground-up facilities for them, either through a build-to-suit or a land lease. We also do real estate advisory services, which is our role in this particular development. We -- our business model is to go out and identify particularly high-volume properties for convenience store operators, fuel center operators, car washes, quick-service restaurants, all of which is in my background. I've been in the real estate development business for 30 years. And I was president and CEO of Thornton Oil Corporation for -- I was with them for 15 years. I was CEO of the company for five years. And I've developed about 250 fuel centers in my career, either through Thornton's or a variety of other operators. So our business model today is to go out and identify premier properties that we think would provide a particularly attractive return on capital for the operator. And that's how we got to North Avenue and this particular site on the corner of North and Ellsworth. We put that property under contract. We start through the planning and entitlement process, both with the village of Villa Park and also with the county and the state IDOT specifically in terms of the access points. And while we're going through the entitlements, we identify a tenant that it's a particular fit for, either a tenant or prospective client. And in this particular case, the retailer that kind of rose to the top of our priority list is a company called Ricky Rocket's Fuel Centers. And Ricky Rocket's is owned principally by Rick Heidner, who is a principal of Heidner Properties. They own 180 or so retail properties all over the country. He's primarily a real estate investor. He was the former founder and operator of J.J. Peppers Convenience Stores. A lot of those were in the city, but some of them were in suburbs. And Rick has developed this new and innovative convenience retailing concept called Ricky Rocket's. He built his first retail operation in Hoffman Estates at essentially the stretch of road between -- on Barrington Road between Higgins Road and the Tollway. And that's open and operating today. And some of the photographs you see peppered around our presentation is of that existing operation for Ricky Rocket's. So based on my background and experience, Mr. Heidner approached me about helping him roll out this concept. He's got a significant amount of interest from both franchise operators and municipalities that want to have one of his more innovative convenience stores in town. And so we're working on about eight properties for them right now, both in the Chicago area and also in the Dallas metropolitan market. So this particular piece of property is the Ingersoll Rand. I'm sure you're familiar with it. It's a pretty high-profile retail piece of property along the north end of North Avenue on the northwest corner of Ellsworth and North. It's a relatively large piece of property. It has significantly more depth and frontage on North Avenue, which has kind of dictated our site plan. But it's a 3.6 acre parcel. There's a very high-traffic count, as everybody knows, traveling up and down North Avenue, about 41,000 cars. And there's also about 1,800 trucks per day on this stretch of North Avenue, which is a component of the Ricky Rocket's offering, that they offer some commercial fueling opportunity that's really very difficult to find along the strategic regional arteries like North Avenue. For those of you that live in the area, which all of you do, you may be familiar with the Speedway that was recently rebuilt on the northwest quadrant of I-55 -- or 355 and North Avenue. They added a commercial fueling component. We developed on behalf of Pilot Fine J, another one about four miles to the west at North Avenue and Gary, that's going to have commercial fueling lanes. But the North Avenue corridor is a very strategic commercial corridor. It's one of the few designated by IDOT, traveling, you know, kind of the breadth of DuPage County and the western end of Cook County as a designated truck route. You know, in our opinion, it's -- there's a void in the market. It's an underserved area for fuel, both gasoline and diesel, and also for grab-and-go food. And we think it's a particularly good location for, you know, this concept. On page eight, there's a conceptual rendering of Ricky Rocket's store. This is the version that was developed in Hoffman Estates. Right now, our firm, along with others, are helping Mr. Heidner refine his operation, refine the architecture. And his developments are getting much more sophisticated, much more food-intensive than you would find in a traditional convenience store. On page nine, there's some photos of the existing Hoffman Estates store. One of Rick's particular differentiators is he's had, just from his experience in Hoffman Estates, he's got a number of retailers that intend to follow him around the market as he builds new stores. In this particular photo, you see a Dunkin' Donuts, a Subway, a Domino's Pizza. And he likes to build ancillary retail around his convenience store to help support some of the voids of the offering in Ricky Rocket's. And because he's a very accomplished real estate investor, he's got a litany of retail clients that want to kind of follow him around and co-develop in these areas where he serves as a very big traffic generator for some of these other convenience retailers and restaurants. So on page 10, you see a pretty simple site plan for the project. The convenience store is oriented toward North Avenue. There's a car wash that closed behind the unit. There's seven gasoline fueling lanes, which will allow 14 cars at a time to fuel. And then in the rear of the site, you'll see his out-lot strip center, which would be used for some of these ancillary food users and retailers, and the circulation for the commercial fueling lanes. And there's -- you see the three arrows on that plan. That would allow three trucks to fuel at the same time. His convenience store size is 7,000 square feet, so it's on the larger end of a convenience store format, and that's to accommodate some of these other offerings that he has internally. And then he's got 25 car parking stalls on the site, and there really isn't a provision for truck parking. This is intended to be a fueling facility for commercial vehicles, but not, you know, a long-term stop for commercial vehicles. On page 11, we've gone through, and some of our most extensive conversations with staff on the project, have been in and around the development of the site and the engineering of the site. At this point, I would say we've completed preliminary engineering of the site, and we have a conceptual idea of what can be done with the site and how to accommodate the stormwater management for the site. So what you see on this plan is a landscape berm on the far northern end of the property, which is intended to serve as a screen to the residential to the north, and then a larger stormwater detention area that's -- will comply, I believe, with the village's new stormwater ordinance that I believe has been adopted, but it's about to be adopted. So we've been working with staff and Manhard Engineering to try to accomplish the goals and objectives and try to meet this higher standard, and I think we'll be successful in doing that. And we'll help alleviate some of the stormwater management issues that have been occurring in that area. And we'll actually serve as a kind of a regional retention area for the surrounding communities that are -- or neighborhoods that are tributary to this stormwater area. On page 12, you see a preliminary landscape plan. Part of Rick Heidner's differentiation is he wants to build the best-looking, the cleanest, the most attractive environment for consumers, and so he spends an extraordinary amount of capital doing that. And I believe he's building the best-looking facility in the industry today. While I know it's not the particular focus of the Plan Commission in terms of plan use, I just wanted to give you a snapshot on page 13 of the potential economic impact of this facility. And as you may or may not know, in Illinois, convenience stores and fuel centers generate a disproportionate amount of tax revenue based on the size of their sites. And it's because one is -- Illinois is one of seven states in the country that not only has a motor fuel tax at the state level, they also calculate the retail sale of motor fuel in their calculation of retail sales tax, of which the municipality gets, you know, their share through the 1% sharing. In the village, it's also our understanding that there's a 0.5% non-home rule sales tax that would also apply to those sales. One point of differentiation to note is while there will be some volume of diesel fuel sold, currently diesel fuel is exempted from state sales tax, and that exemption expires in 2018. The governor has been working with the state legislature, or at least admonishing the state legislature, about the sunset of this exemption, because it would be a very significant revenue generator for the state in the event that this exemption was not renewed by the state legislature when it sunsets. Unless the legislature takes action to renew it, it will expire, and then diesel sales will be taxed, just like gasoline sales are taxed. So there's a projection there that we think we're in about -- well in excess of $100,000 a year of tax revenue generated from this facility. On page 15, we just summarized our requested action. We're looking for a conditional use for an automobile service station and car wash and the subdivision of one lot in the two lots. So that's the basic overview. As I said, Steve is here from Manhard, and I think that Peter walked in it?
No, he's in.
He must be waylaid, but we'll find him. But Peter Lemon from Kimley Horr Engineering is here to answer some traffic engineering issues. We'll find Peter here in a second. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move in our agenda to staff input. Mr. Grille. Thank you. As included in your packet, this is a proposal for a two-lot subdivision and a conditional use for a automobile sale -- or automobile fuel center and car wash. I am going to pass out the revised landscape plan, because the engineering was still sort of under review when this development was submitted for application. And the review of that preliminary engineering suggested there needed to be some additional stormwater detention on-site. So they had to revise principally the landscape plan as it relates to that area on the north side of the property. Nothing else changed on the site plan. What happened is they needed to pick up about 100 acres -- that writes deep -- about 100 acres of upstream drainage area on this site. And it precipitated the need to create a detention area. And what they were able to do to get that is create a berm on the far north side of the property, immediately adjacent to the residential property in the village of Addison. Staff has looked at that. I also passed out the engineers or the public works memo on this particular project indicating that, at least from a preliminary standpoint, they don't have any particular concerns with the development of the site, as they have the most recent preliminary engineering plans. They submitted to the Kane-DuPage Soil and Water Conservation Service. We got that report back. The contents of that report suggest that we look at a couple of things, but those issues are generally addressed in actual building permit and final engineering plans that would be submitted with this project. The plan, staff believes, conforms to the comprehensive master plan for this area. The two lots that would be created both meet the zoning and subdivision requirements that are included in village ordinance. It meets setbacks. If you notice, on the subdivision plans, there are easements that have been created for access to Lot 2, because Lot 2 doesn't have any direct access to Ellsworth Avenue directly. So easements have been created on that subdivision plat to ensure access to Lot 2 into the future. The landscaping plan conforms to the requirements that are included in the village code as it relates to landscaping. And staff finds that this is a use that works well along North Avenue. It's a very heavily-traveled thoroughfare. And actually, from the BP gas station at Villa, there's not another gas station until you get to 53 on the north side of North Avenue. So this does, or would help fill a void that exists on the north side of North Avenue through Villa Park. And staff is supportive of the request. If the Plan Commission finds in favor of this development, they could entertain a motion to approve application PG-15-0009 for Bluestone Single Tenant Properties. That includes a two-lot subdivision at the northwest corner of North Avenue, and Ellsworth Avenue is depicted on the plat of subdivision entitled 150 East North Avenue Resubdivision, prepared by Compass Surveying Limited and dated December 20th, 2015, and a conditional use pursuant to Article 14 dot 3 dot C dot 4 for automobile service station and 14 point 3 point C point 5 for automobile washing for a property located at 150 East North Avenue, pin number 0334302059, with the following conditions: that the site be developed generally in conformance with the preliminary site dimensional and paving plan prepared by Manhard Consulting dated December 22nd, 2015, and listed as Sheet 3 of 9; submittal of a landscape plan prepared and sealed by a registered landscape architect generally in conformance with the preliminary landscape plan prepared by Manhard Consulting Limited dated February 11th, which is the one I handed out this evening, 2016, and listed as Sheet 7 of 9; that no overnight parking of vehicles except for employees shall be permitted; no washing or maintenance of vehicles or trailers shall occur in the parking lot; and that no signage is approved as part of this request, with a finding of fact that such conditional use meets the conditional use standards enumerated in Article 6 dot 11D of Appendix C of the Municipal Code, Village of Villa Park, Basic Zoning Ordinance, and as included in the staff memo dated February 4th, 2016. With that, I will entertain any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. We're going to move into public participation and questions. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in regards to this petition? So go ahead and stand up, and we'll -- since I think you're going to be the only one, why don't you go ahead? Oh, you two? Okay. Stand up at the same time, please. We're going to have you both sworn in. And when it's your turn to come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, okay? Could you swear them in, please?
Yeah. And state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
My name is Afroz Ather. I live on 1044th of Ellsworth Avenue in Addison, so I'm directly north of the proposed development. As of right now, the development between where the house is and where the current development is, there's probably an acre or 150 feet of tree coverage between that and the North Avenue. That tree coverage seems like it will be taken away, and a retention area will be put in. So I think there will be a lot more noise and noise and air pollution in that area, especially with the amount of diesel vehicles coming through to fill up their gasoline. I was wondering if I could propose that there be additional shrubbery and dense trees put in that area, so that that noise filter and air filter will be there.
Okay. Did you -- is there another copy of this landscape plan?
Yeah, I have. I've seen it.
Okay. The new one? Okay. All right.
So I see that he's adding like an eight-foot berm there, but there's only seems to be one row of trees, whereas right now, currently, there's probably 200, 150 feet of trees there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Could you get this back?
Hi, my name is Kristi Capuleti. I'm with Royal Plaza Management. I represent the owner of 200 to 208 East North Avenue, Royal Plaza. The current owner of Ingersoll Rand, we experienced quite a bit of cut-through traffic from our parking lot into their facility, and it's difficult to say from the site plan that I've seen how the curb cuts will allow for these larger vehicles to come in and out of North Avenue and Ellsworth. And we'd like that to be addressed and spoken to, so that we can eliminate the current cut-through issues that we're experiencing that have deteriorated our parking lot.
Where are you currently located?
Right on the other side of Ellsworth.
To the -- okay. So you're here at the corner of Ellsworth and North?
Okay.
Supreme Lobster?
Supreme Lobster is on the other side of us. We're 200 to 208. Supreme Lobster is the next building to the --
O'Reilly.
Yes, O'Reilly and U.S. Rural Care.
Okay. So when you say "cut-through"?
They're coming into our parking lot where Supreme Lobster and our building exist. They're going all the way through and then cutting across Ellsworth into the current Ingersoll Rand. So I'm sure that the new development site is going to allow for some changes to that site plan, but we can't tell exactly what those changes are and whether or not that will address our problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Are there?
If anyone had been addressed, but I can't tell from the --
Yeah. I don't think anyone directly addressed it, so we'll go there. So before we jump into questions from the commission, I think let's address some of these public participation questions. So I think if someone could describe the berm and the landscape buffer that's intended between the neighboring residential property, as was asked, and then also maybe address this cut-through issue in terms of site planning and how the new curb cuts will change, or, you know, what -- how that access is envisioned into the new proposed development. So however you guys want to answer it.
Sure. I'll address some of the landscaping requirements.
So were you here and get sworn in?
I don't think you were. So both of you, please stand up, get sworn in, please, and then state your name and address for the record when you speak. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Peter Lemon with Kimley Horr and Associates.
My name is Steve Shanholdser, and I'm with Manhard Consulting.
So we prepared the traffic study, that portion of the analysis. And I'm trying to make sure I understand the comment. So the concern -- yeah. So the concern, as I understand it, is that there are currently trucks that are choving westbound, cutting through the property east of the site to get to the current site.
Correct. Our access to Ellsworth lines up exactly with Ingersoll Rand's access to Ellsworth, so it's easier for them to just --
Got it. Because of the turn. Okay.
The current on Ellsworth is too tight for the semi trucks that are coming through.
Okay. As part of the project, there's an improvement to have a southbound left turn and a southbound right turn lane. We can evaluate if the issue is that trucks are currently having a hard time making that westbound right turn to go north because of the radius being too tight or something like that. We can look and figure out how to maybe soften the turn. Right now, I think there's actually a driveway kind of right on the corner. Is that right? So we can look at trying to figure out how to maybe soften that turn to make it easier for trucks, so that they don't have a reason to want to cut through an adjacent property.
Is it the turn from north --
Onto Ellsworth that they're having a problem with, or is it lining themselves up to go into that northern driveway?
They have two accesses onto Ellsworth. We have one that's right off of North Avenue. We have one further to the north. So they're coming in and going to the one that's further to the north, and then shooting across, because that's a rear access to Ingersoll Rand.
Okay. So I think some of that is going to change quite a bit, because obviously that traffic that was going to Ingersoll Rand, being truck traffic trying to get into the back of that lot, isn't going to exist anymore. But they've got two different lots, and I don't know if you've seen the plan, or you want to look at the plan.
I've seen the landscape plan.
This is the diesel fuel.
Yeah.
But it's going to be a tight -- and just from the experience that I've seen watching this traffic consistently, as they're coming down North Avenue, going westbound, to turn right and then make an immediate left into your access point for this proposed location, it's easier for them to cut through us. However, we can address that if we, you know, realign our access to Ellsworth, so that it's not a straight shot across to your access to Ellsworth, something, you know, we make some adjustments on either side, you know, we can open those conversations.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to --
You know, I know we are probably very close to this one, and down here, we're going to be spot-on. You know, the satellite image is blocking out my -- it's like you block it over your personal, so you can't really see.
It's just one. Is this the traffic? Or since we're not knowing --
No, it's not going to. Yeah, and I think currently --
to be spot on. You know, the satellite image is blocking out my, it's, I think you block it over your parcel, so you can't really see.
It's this one. Is this the traffic?
No, it's not going to.
Yeah, and I think currently-
So I think the entrance is actually north of the property.
Right. So if you can refer maybe to our landscape plan is, is a larger plan or in the site plan, just the simple site plan that's in the presentation.
Is this what changes?
So the, the way the circulation works for the commercial vehicles is they traverse Ellsworth to the northern end of our site, which is actually past the rear property line of the, of the property on the northeast corner. So the way the circulation works is they'd go to our northernmost cut, they would circulate kind of long, slow, future-
So is that, is that turning radius of North Avenue-
On Ellsworth adequate for a semi moving westbound to make the traverse?
I believe so. I believe so, but we can-
Okay.
Yeah, maybe hold it up. So, I believe, and I'm trying to, this doesn't obviously show their property, but I believe their access point maybe comes in over here.
Which is the existing rear driveway of Ingersoll Rand.
Yeah. Right. And then there's another driveway that's pretty much right on the corner. So, you know, this is for your auto traffic that is using a conventional portion of the gas station. The trucks would come up to here, which is I think past, whereas I'm understanding the northern property line is enter this way and have a counterclockwise circulation. So I don't, I guess I just don't understand how that would be a convenient movement to cut through the property and come up to here.
I think they're cutting through the property on North Avenue and they're completely cutting the whole corner of the park.
Yeah, because the, because the northeast corner of North and Ellsworth is maybe considered too tight. So I think we can look at that and, and maybe create a larger radius that makes that turn, basically doesn't give trucks a reason to try to avoid it. I think is, seems like the easiest solution.
Okay.
I don't know offhand what that radius is right now. So we would, you know, we could look at that in terms of the IDOT coordination, what, you know, what kind of larger radius would be appropriate for the trucks.
Okay.
You know, that would certainly be an appropriate condition if the commission is so inclined to make sure we work through that with staff in terms of the funding.
Well, I think we would just be, you know, obviously it's got to involve IDOT and it's going to be, it's IDOT's road. So if we're talking about making, widening a curb cut with IDOT, it's going to be working with our staff and IDOT and it's going to be up to them. I mean, we, we will make the, in our recommendation, if we're, if it's favorable, we will probably make a recommendation to verify, validate that and, and expand it if, if the authorities, having jurisdiction will allow it. Because if that's what is, you know, is stopping trucks from utilizing the correct motion, then-
We also are servicing, you know, US Rural Care is servicing some people with some serious medical concerns. So it becomes a safety concern as well.
I think clearly we don't want people cutting through your site. And it would seem like the most intuitive way is to turn right on the street and turn left into the property. And so if it's a, an issue of the radius design, we're already, you know, into IDOT for their approval of the, the curb cut. So as part of that, I think we're, you know, open to raising this issue with them and understanding what the, I don't think they would be opposed to providing an inappropriate radius to trucks.
Yeah, and currently the two driveways are lined up.
Yeah.
If they're offset, like it seems like they're going to be, I mean, I don't have anything visually in front of me that verifies that, but if those driveways are offset-
Which, I'm sorry, which driveway?
The driveway-
Their driveway and proposed.
Their southern, their northern driveway?
Yeah.
Their northern driveway, I believe-
The northern driveway is the only one that lines up. The southern driveway doesn't have a drive-thru across.
No.
Right.
I believe their northern driveway lines up with the truck exit and not the entrance.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. That, part of the convenience of cutting through there is that you don't have to make a turn at all.
That's correct.
Instead of ma, having to make a tight right and then a tight left, if you can just weave through there, that's convenient. If those are offset, which I think they are, that eliminates some of that convenience of weaving because now you have to turn back north and then left even shorter distance.
If you were to cut through their site and go straight across, you'd be going into the truck exit.
Right.
Right.
I'll make a sugge, I've been over there and I think what, what you're seeing in your parking lot is those trucks pull in that southern exit, come out the northern exit to make a U-turn to actually park on Ellsworth. And if there was a condition put on this to where there would be no parking on that street-
Yeah.
We wouldn't, I don't think, I think that would eliminate some of the issue of those trucks coming into your parking lot. Cause they-
How wide is that?
This, I mean, that's, Ellsworth there is a very, I mean, it's an unusually wide street.
Right. And we're talking about striping a separate southbound turn lanes and entrances because right now it's really not-
So it's wide enough to, to stripe more than, more than two lanes?
Right, without widening it.
Okay. So it's-
But, but you're right. If, if the radius is in such a size that people are avoiding it, then, then I think we can look at that and show like, well, what does the radius need to be?
Yeah.
What do they, what are they trying to accomplish by going through? I mean, to pull onto Ingersoll Rand property without-
They're trying to get back here.
Okay, so they want to get back there.
Yeah. So I think it, it seems like we don't have alignment with the driveways with this proposed new development. So that's one issue that, that this new development will, will rectify. The other thing is there's a change of use, right? So, you know, it's not drivers going to drop and, and it's probably going to, these are probably the, people that are driving the trucks now are probably used to doing that. They're, they're going repeatedly to Ingersoll Rand. Presumably, these are going to be trucks and cars that are new to the area, coming in, use the gas station and get out. So they may not know that you can use your parking lot to cut off the corner. The other thing I was going to say is, you know, other than them not having driveways aligned and making sure the curb cut at Ellsworth and North is adequate for truck traffic, some of, some of your issue right now, though, is a little bit how your configuration is. So you may need to think about moving your northern driveway. And then that open corner driveway there is very unusual. I don't think it would be ever approved by anyone right now. So that, that-
Talking about our south driveway, is that Ellsworth?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I think if we were to go into IDOT and try to change the radius, I think they would, they might try to close that off.
That's correct.
It doesn't mean that they wouldn't maybe permit a different driveway.
And I think if you, if you were to do that, I think it would help with the problem because right now it seems so wide open and all pavement and there's place for me to go and there's not cars parked there.
It would be part of this development, you know, these changes that are being made. I mean, I'm sure the owner would be favorable to comment because we have no advantage of having three openings.
Yeah.
You know, and, and we're open to any suggestion to eliminate this cut-through.
Yeah. So, so that, to me, it seems like it's a two-pronged, this property, the driveway shouldn't align with yours. That's one thing. And they can control that with their development, the geometry, making sure that, that curb cut and radius is, is very open for trucks moving, you know, making movements off of North Avenue. But then thirdly, I would take a look, you should take a look at your property and see where, can I live with that other, your southern access onto Ellsworth is really, you know, as we're saying, I don't think any jurisdiction would allow you to do that now. So it's-
They didn't put it in. It was existing.
Understood, understood. But it's something that now with everything else, and if that's been a problem, we would suggest that you look at. But we can't condition this petitioner for items occurring on your property, if you see what I'm saying. We-
Public right-of-way.
This petitioner, though, isn't proposing on making-
Go to item.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, the access point is not a public right-of-way.
Yeah, but it comes from your property onto and through a public right-of-way. So if there's changes that need to be made to it, the jurisdiction isn't going to make it, you would, you would need to make it with permission and get permits from the, from the jurisdiction, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So I, I just put that out there to say that we're not going to be able to condition this petitioner that's going to have any impact on that side of the street unless he was going to be improving that whole street. And I guess I'm hearing, no, that's not in the plans. It's not necessary.
Right. I think what, we don't want trucks going through their site either.
Understood.
So I think, you know, we can look at the radius if that's, you know, the issue or if there's some other issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I guess I'm not sure what else. I think, I think that's fine with us. We would definitely want to look and make sure that the radius is adequate, that people aren't cutting through the site and that they feel they can turn right onto Ellsworth and turn right into the site.
Okay. All right. So that's that issue. Can we talk about landscaping and berms?
Sure.
So when the, the site plan was generated, you know, we really dedicated a, a large portion, a north portion of the site to be open space. And it was going to utilize this stormwater management facility to really help with some of the flooding concerns of the village. With, in publication of that, you know, we, we did construct this berm that, it kind of served two purposes. You know, it will act as a screening device and it will help block sound, probably more than the trees to, you know, kind of address your concern. The screening of the berm and the trees are in conformance with the ordinance and the landscaping requirements.
So what, what is it? What does it consist of right now?
The requirement?
No, what's on your plan?
Oh, it's a six-foot, it's a six-foot high berm in the back.
Okay.
You can see it up there. And the requirement is to have a six-foot screen requirement and then along the front edge.
So what are the plantings that are on the berm? So it's a six-foot high berm from, from the property line elevation-
Right.
To the top of the berm is six feet tall.
Right. And then we're planting it with shrubbing and then deciduous trees.
Commissioner, I, I would tell you, our original plan, we weren't disturbing that wooded area that the neighbor described initially. But I think it's this balancing of issues between trying to accommodate and improve the existing stormwater management in the area and retain the vegetation. You know, we're, we're not getting a larger site. We're not building a larger site by eliminating the trees. We're really accommodating this stormwater management area that was designed to improve the whole neighborhood, not just our site. So it was really at the request of staff and in regards to addressing some of the stormwater management issues that we came up with this plan that I think is a pretty robust transition between our site and the residential to the north and still accomplishing some of the stormwater management benefit that we're getting by adding the retention area, which, you know, in and of itself is another very large green area, albeit not wooded like it is now, but it's a very large transitional green area.
Sure. I understand it as a green area and I think the berm's great, but now I'm getting into, we're talking about some shrubs and some deciduous trees. So that's not such complete screening. What else can we do there with using landscape materials, trees? We've got a lot of green space because we're going to have a berm. We're showing sort of one row. And have we done studies that try to eliminate some of the view and sightlines into the residential properties to the north?
Well, you know, I, I think the, the landscape plan was designed so when the landscaping matures, that it would be, you know, a pretty consistent screen. The issue becomes if you plant those plantings too close together initially and in five years, it's really overplanted and it takes an extraordinary amount of, of maintenance to maintain it. And actually, you'd have to pull some landscaping out. You know, if we can work with staff to try to beef up as much as we can, the landscape transition and the types of landscape screening between now and when, before we go to the village board, we can certainly look at that and-
Yeah, I guess I would, you know, from our perspective in the past, we've recommended that people look at not just deciduous, but some conifers in there so that we can get something that's green and, and will provide a screen relatively rapidly. There's several species that will do that. And, and to think in layers, that's one advantage that you have is that you got, you do, as you say, have a lot of, of green space. So it does give you a lot of room to stagger these trees so they're not so close together. Maybe you can end up with a row along the, the driveway. But I think in terms of addressing that and that neighbor, and the neighbor's concern, meaning I think he has a valid concern that he's going to be right up against a high, you know, intense use. And he did have this buffer of the, this green forest. But yeah, we would expect that you would have to provide something similar in terms of stormwater management, given how much paving that you're, that you're proposing. So it's just a matter of mitigating that, that, that overlap of use. Okay. So you'd be, you'd be willing to take a look at that and make sure that we get a good screening? Great. Okay. All right. And I'm going to move on to questions from the commission. I'm going to point out to the people that are here from the public that there'll be another chance for you, after you hear some of these questions and answers, perhaps to jump back in, okay? So you'll have, so another chance. So questions from commissioners?
I have a couple. Why are we subdividing into two lots?
That's my first one. It's done for two reasons. One is more internal structure for hydrant properties and the way the, the project is going to be financed. Ricky Rockets, the retail convenience store and fuel center operation, is going to be located on the larger lot. The retail strip center that's going to have the ancillary uses for financing purposes and ownership of Ricky Rockets, he insists that that's separate so he can treat that separately with different ownership and different financing. So it's just a function of, of how we need to accomplish the development, the way he's, he's structuring the financing on the lot. You know, we, we do meet the subdivision ordinance, you know, what is a little unique that I think someone pointed out about the easements. It's not unlike, you know, a larger shopping center is part of one tract and then the outlots are individual outlots. It's, it's similar to, you know, a retail outlot as part of a, a larger tract.
I've, I've seen other, and been involved in other projects that are, the gas station convenience stores that have retail outbuildings and they're frequently separate lots, separate parcels, even though it's all sort of part of the same development.
And I can tell you, I developed a, a project for Thornton Oil Corporation up in Highland Park. We had a 2.8 acre parcel. We had to divide that in two lots in a very similar fashion because we had a long-term ground lease agreement with Thornton's on the primary lot. We developed the strip center on the balance of the lot. That really is only access was granted through easements. And then we ended up, after we filled the shopping center, we sold that to an investor so they could peacefully coexist. So I think as long as the, the easements are in place and part of the subdivision and we can meet your subdivision requirement out, it, it's not that unusual from, from our development now.
So it's an overall development that's going to have shared water detention, but then there's a separate lot that could be sold separately. But there's easements that control-
Yeah, but there's going to be, you know, restrictive covenants and there, there's going to be an obligation for the main lot to be able to accept the stormwater. And, you know, they have an ongoing obligation to provide access and stormwater management and landscape maintenance. And there's going to be this internal, you know, covenants and restrictions to manage it, just like you would in a, a multi-tenant shopping center.
It looks like the trash corrals are on one lot.
That was really just an effort to, to try to consolidate them in a way that was the least obtrusive to the-
I like where they are.
And then I guess this is maybe a staff question. Stormwater retention, do our, do, are trees considered in that? You know, because I know trees have a great way to get rid of water and all that. Are they considered, if you plant more trees, could you make that, could, will that change the stormwater? Okay. And then, you know, I wasn't sure if she was clear on her, did you get the answer you wanted?
Um, basically you're not going to create a change. That's pretty much what we-
Well, that's, that's what it sounded like, but if I could say, the entrances aren't going to line up.
Wait, well, and as if, from the site plan and I was looking at the landscape plan, I couldn't see the curb cut coming into that street, so I wasn't sure if it was going to be an exasperation of a berm issue. So I think between what we've discussed and, I know I can call you Pritchard, right?
Yes, you can.
So we'll continue to work with you guys to resolve that.
And you're comfortable with where it's going though, right?
Yeah. And if we have any issue with the use, if we want to be good neighbors, we just want to make sure that we don't have a bad neighbor.
We want to be good neighbors.
All right. So you could, I mean, I, I'm pretty comfortable that they're not going to drive onto the property. It just doesn't work anymore, so.
If not, I'll be damned.
All right. All right. That was all my questions.
Any questions, Commissioner?
The, I haven't described it. The area back here, which I'm understanding to be, these are going to be the diesel?
Right.
Those all, okay.
Those are three diesel lanes. Okay. Any questions on here?
Any questions on here? You still going?
Oh, no, I'm done.
Okay.
Actually, I got one question.
Okay.
Do you have any type of an outside intercom? And then if so, are those going to be directly at the pump or any overhead?
So the Illinois State Farm Marshal requires fuel retailers to be able to communicate with a customer at the pump if you're self-service.
Right, right.
So I think where issues have been created in my experience is when marketing and advertising is continually pumped through speaker systems at all hours of the day and evening, where, you know, that goes up kind of above and beyond the requirement. And, you know, it's for obvious reasons. You have to, if there's an overfill or a customer's having a problem, they need to be able to communicate to the cashier. So we would agree that the speaker system could be used for only customer safety from, you know, 9:00 PM until 6:00 AM the following morning, you know, put a reasonable restriction on, you know, any advertising that was done through any outdoor speakers. I suppose that's where you were heading.
Works for me.
Okay, I think I'll jump in here on a few things, maybe you guys will think of some other stuff. In the meantime, so the first question I had, I think you addressed when we were talking with your neighbor there in regards to landscaping on the very northern boundary there is to enhance that screening. I, you know, kind of moving further south between the truck entry lane and then where the proposed water detention is, can we get some more landscape trees along there? I think what you'll have is an advantage then, you've got trees, some blocking of, and then you'll have space and then you'll have another row of trees. I think that's really going to be nice and soften that because right now, as I look at that lot one with the truck, those are really wide lanes, it's a lot of asphalt. And I think we need to sort of soften that a bit, especially as it's going into a residential neighborhood. So when you're looking at the landscape, I would like you to take a look at that as well, see what you can do to enhance that. On the trash enclosures, I think they're in a really good spot. They're tucked in. I like that, but we always ask that they be made out of, you know, if these buildings are masonry-
They'll be masonry.
Masonry. Okay, great. Fully screened?
With a screen.
Great. The next question is, I don't think we saw anything on lighting. And so what is your approach to lighting going to be, especially realizing that we have residential neighborhood, neighbors to the north?
Well, the lighting in these developments will be all LED lighting-
Okay.
-which the particular advantage of that, other than, you know, the green nature and the energy conservation nature, LED lights shine down, not out. And so they get, you get much more light, you get higher quality, you get higher light quality with less glare with LED lights and they'll be shielded, you know, on the side so you're not going to see them from-
So what I'm looking for, and then what height the poles are you looking at?
You know, they have to be, I think the clearance is 15 feet in order to have a commercial vehicle be able to pass under them. I'm sure we did a photometric plan. I don't know if that's part of what we've submitted to the city yet, but we would certainly, you know, understand that we would-
And I think we would want you to do one, submit one, so we can make sure we're getting cut off to our neighbors. They have to, so-
Zero pretendles at the lot line is not a standard we can't meet.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to make sure that that was in your thinking of the plans and everything. My other question goes to, you mentioned a couple times in the presentation that this is an innovative convenience store. So I haven't seen anything so far that tells me what's innovative about it. So could you, could you maybe expound on that as to what is unique?
So it's the retail offering on the inside. It's really the amount of capital that Mr. Hydner is spending on these Ricky Rocket's fuel centers. And it's the customer experience. So a lot of it is around customer service and staffing. A lot of it is, if you go to the one in Hoffman Estates, you would find restrooms that you might find in a fine hotel, not in a traditional convenience store. Right now, he's refining the model as these facilities are growing in size, getting more sophisticated around the food offering and having multiple food offerings. He's going to do, for example, a scrambled egg station in the morning that's going to have a man stationed to make scrambled eggs and egg sandwiches in the morning.
In the, what's called the convenience store?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So there actually will be, and these aren't separate sort of tenants in, like I've been to some of these and they have like a Subway in the corner or a-
Well, the convenience store itself will be a single operator.
Okay.
There'll be multiple tenants in the retail strip center behind. That'll be-
Got it.
-you know, compatible uses, more likely than not food uses. But, you know, what his offering is on the inside, while I would admit to you it's in the process of being refined-
Sure.
-it's going to be atypical of a traditional convenience store. So the innovation is mostly around the food offering in the store, the amount of capital that's spent in the store and the improvement on the customer experience, you know, while they're in the store.
Could I interrupt?
Sure.
So the convenience store is not going to be your Subway or it's going to be strictly a Ricky Rocket's convenience?
Right, but there will be deli program. Mr. Hydner is working with a local, regional deli operator to put a unit in this facility and there will be a broader range of grab-and-go food available in the convenience store that you would find in a typical Speedway or a Ford store or a Shell station.
But we'll still have all the coolers with drinks and a-
Yeah.
And W, is there some other retail products besides just snacks?
There's automotive. Rick is developing a line of T-shirts and kind of just fun Ricky Rocket's branded merchandise that you would find in the store, everything from coffee cups to T-shirts to keychains to, so, and, you know, service retail, supportive retail in terms of some, you know, auto care products and-
Okay.
It's like an upscale truck stop, basically?
Well, I would not call it a truck stop because it's not-
No, that's because you don't have a lot of trucks and that's what I'm thinking, it's about a thousand square feet.
Well, so there's 1,800 trucks a day at the front door here, so that's certainly worthy of having a commercial fueling offering like we have here, three diesel lanes. The pilot store, which I would tell you is really more of a fuller service, professional driver experience. I would stop short of a truck stop. They don't have showers, they don't have these other traditional driver amenities. But the fact that he doesn't, that you can't park a semi-truck on-site is really going to limit this for somebody that needs diesel fuel quickly and conveniently to get in and out. So it's not so much geared for the professional driver, it's there as a convenience.
I guess I was thinking more the amount of retail at a normal truck stop, which exceeds a normal convenience store.
Yeah, I think that would be fair.
So on that no truck parking issue, it seems like that, you know, I see that it's one-way circulation going around the retail building. And it's pretty wide, especially behind it. What's to stop trucks from sort of parking parallel or, you know?
Well, you know, Peter maybe could talk specifically about that, but while it seems to be a large area to circumnavigate that lot with an 18-wheeler, it pretty much takes that-
Okay, so it takes that whole space up. So if there's a truck sitting there for very long, it's going to have to move.
Right. And, you know, I would tell you, contrary to perhaps our experience on the roadways, commercial drivers are very respectful of other commercial drivers. So the way this facility will work, I'm just hunting for the site plan here, yeah, there's enough spacing in this plan, so when a driver pulls in between those rectangles that are the diesel fueling islands, they fuel in the front, you know, where the cab is. And then after they're done fueling, they'll pull forward a full truck lane and we've got enough room before he gets outside of our property into the right-of-way where he could pull forward and allow the next driver, he or she, allow the next driver to come in and start fueling while, if he wanted to go into the store and use the restroom or get some coffee or food or whatever, that, so those would be the three very short-term
Okay.
-parking stalls that the driver would have available to go inside the store and do whatever, but they wouldn't stay there very long because they, the next guy could get out.
So if a truck's pulled in there, when we say going inside the store, they're going to go inside the convenience store, so there's a sidewalk, I think it's on the east side there that would go across the car wash drive to give driver, truck driver access?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that gives truck driver access into the convenience store.
Right.
My other question on this is, you know, you've got a pump and the canopy for the truck fueling that's within seven feet of the car wash building. Are we sure we can do that from a building code standpoint?
It's been my experience that that's not an issue. Generally, canopies over fuel islands are an ancillary structure, they're not considered a building and, you know, that's a pretty traditional layout, I would tell you.
Yeah, but it's a, but you're going now to a neighboring building on a neighboring, on a different zoning lot that may have an easement, but it's a question.
And the only way I can answer that is, as part of a building plan review, if it doesn't meet the building code standards, it wouldn't be allowed.
Okay. So that's just an area of concern because it's right up against the car wash, there's a pump there and, you know, it's not, and it's technically not an accessory to that use, although it has fueling islands to it. I don't know how it all works with being separate properties and everything.
Well, actually, those fuel pumps, they're part of the main lot. The separate lot is where the retail building is and a dark dotted line around.
Oh, it's literally just an island in there. Okay. So that is all one's lot of record then.
Right.
Well, so, okay, so maybe it's no different than on the other side. I think that was mentioned, that you're looking to IDOT to allow for a left-hand turn out of Ellsworth onto North Avenue. Are you seeking a light at that?
We engaged Kim Lee Horn to study that and Peter, why don't you answer that specifically because it's somewhat of a technical concern.
Sure. So we thought about the idea of a light. We simply don't have enough traffic coming out of Ellsworth to satisfy the warrants. There's also, because North Avenue is designated by IDOT as a strategic regional arterial, so there's more stringent spacing requirements. So I think we realized, one, we probably don't have the volume, two, we'd be fighting a full battle with the spacing. So what we did look at was if we were to allow southbound left turns, what does that mean? Are there, you know, signals that, to the east and west, do they provide enough gaps? Obviously, you wait a little bit longer when you're making left turns, so we know that people would have to wait to do that, but if they're willing to wait, can they do it? So they have, we looked at one-stage and two-stage left turns. So a one-stage left turn is when you just, say you're on Ellsworth and you want to just make the turn and go. A two-stage would be is you use the median as a refuge, so you wait for westbound traffic, you go, you have an area where you can kind of stop without being hit by anybody and then you complete your next turn maybe two or three seconds later. So what we did was a gap analysis and looked at whether we have enough gaps to service the amount of traffic that might do that, that are created by the adjacent signals. We have enough gaps from a one-stage or two-stage approach. So either way, we feel like there's enough gaps created by the signals. The other thing we looked at was the crash history at the intersection. There are some people that make left turns there today, but we also looked at, you know, rear-end collisions and so forth. There isn't a significant crash history. Most of the crashes tend to be like side swipes, people making, changing lanes when there's a car next to it, things like that, but nothing related to people either turning on or off of North Avenue. So in the traffic study that was submitted to IDOT, we did request that. We submitted that about two months ago and we haven't been back from them yet. So really, a lot of it depends on whether or not they would permit us to do so.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question. Isn't there also a U-turn sign there that allows U-turns?
I think there's a sign that allows westbound U-turns, not eastbound, though.
Okay, is that right?
I can double check, yeah.
Can't go eastbound or U-turns? All right.
Okay. I think those are my questions. Do you have other commission questions?
No.
Looking at the site plan on the southern edge, those, assuming are air pumps or-
Fuel tanks.
Fuel, are those the tanks?
Those are underground storage tanks.
Okay, that's what, okay, it was kind of hard to tell from the sensor signal.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah, you know, these gas stations that were built years ago, they're no longer gas stations and what happens is that they become used car lots after the gas stations outlived its usefulness. Villa in North Avenue, Elmer says a car lot, Wade Sal's car lot on North Avenue is an old Clark. There's a lot at Westmore in St. Charles. Of course, the Tobacco Hut was a gas station as well. And I think what we're doing here is we're creating another brownfield and I'm wondering, has the technology changed that when these gas stations outlive their usefulness or whatever, they stop working as a, as a gas station? Has the technology changed with these tanks and the storage in which the lot can be redeveloped?
Short answer to that is yes, definitely so. I can tell you that I started developing gas stations, convenience stores in 1987. Back then, you were still allowed to bury a bare steel tank, so they were just stainless steel tanks that had a predictable useful life of about 20 years before they would start to corrode and leak. So when we went past 1987 and beyond, and I can tell you that all the new stores that I built for Thornton and I built 125 of them or so, we installed from day one when we started building new units in 1988 ground up, that we put in fiberglass tanks and then that expanded to double-wall fiberglass tanks, which essentially is a tank within a tank. And there's leak detection between the inner wall and the outer wall of the tank that would tell you if you had a relatively minor leak, a pinhole leak, that there would be an alarm go-off inside the store. We're obligated to report our monitoring to the Illinois State Farm Marshal on a monthly basis and we'd have to explain any time a monitoring alarm went off. And so while there's a variety, a litany of issues with stations that were built in the '60s and '70s and '80s, it's primarily due to the bare steel tanks. Jim Thornton, who was the founder of Thornton Oil Corporation, started after World War II. He used to tell me that when they got oil spots on the driveway, they would hose it down with gasoline and let it run into the sewer because that's, that was the most effective way to clean the parking lot. Nobody would obviously do that today, but it was just, so it's these litany of issues from the units that were built in the '60s, '70s and even the early '80s that you see are problematic today. The other reason why you see the old Clark stations and those tobacco huts is those are really very antiquated units. There are half-acre lots, quarter-acre lots. The new modern convenience stores and fuel centers, this one's almost four acres.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the smallest site, I think my former company Thornton's would take is about an acre and a half or two acres today. Speedway's building three or four acre sites. They're big, more modern, higher-volume locations and so I think the long-term viability of those units are well beyond 20 years. Plus, the investment in those units is, the investment here is going to be, you know, seven and a half to eight million dollars, I think, when Mr. Hydner's all done. So you have to, that's more than a 20-year investment that you have to turn.
I mean, it's primed for a parking lot now, you know?
Oh, no, no, that's, I just don't, you know, I-
Good question.
I'm just concerned that, you know, we have these, I guess, lack of a better word, brownfields in the, in and around the village.
That's a good question.
The other thing I would tell you is today, the clean, the environmental cleanup related to refined gasoline, it's really not a very complicated problem. It can be done relatively cost-effectively. The state set up this LUS fund, which, you know, currently is not paying any dollars out, but, you know, there was a fund to get these old sites cleaned up. We just did a project for Thornton's down in Blue Island and, you know, we excavated hundreds of thousands of dollars of soil out of the ground, but that's a no further action site. It's a clean site as far as the Illinois EPA is concerned, so it's not that problematic to resolve those.
No, no, I've seen that process, it's called reclaim, I think it is, with the burner and the conveyor belt and, you know, it's like, almost looks like a cement mixer-
Yeah.
-and it burns everything up and, you know, I understand the process, but to a developer that's, you know, it makes the lot cost prohibitive because you have to-
Right.
You know, it can be done, yes, but like I said, we have a couple of these sites around town that I don't see them being anything more than used car lots for foreseeable future.
This site actually, there is an environmental release on this site that was done back when, I think it was a Volkswagen dealership, it was some automobile dealership and there was an underground storage tank. There was a release, the current owner pulled that tank and remediated that leak. The current owner pulled that tank and remediate, remediated that leak. We have since gone on and done additional testing and it meets the state standards today. So, you know, there was just less sophistication 20, 30 years ago than there is today.
Okay. So if there's no more questions from commissioners, okay. I want to give the gentleman here from the neighbor a chance to ask, see if he has any more questions too, so.
I just want to clarify one question. Your question about U-turns, there are U-turns allowed at the intersection of Ellsworth and?
Both east and westbound?
In both directions. You tend to see mostly westbound. There were very few eastbound U-turns, or, you know.
When they did the study, they went out and actually counted all movements at the intersection.
So it was usually more in the evening peak period when we tend to find them. Very few in the morning. So I just want to clarify that.
I didn't remember if there were signage on both sides. I'm pretty sure the eastbound side, going east, there was a sign, but I couldn't remember going westbound.
Yeah.
If there's a sign that actually specified for a U-turn.
And I guess regardless, people are definitely doing it, so.
Okay. Great. Any more questions?
No more questions. So we were suggesting that they put in every entries and then maybe align closer to the driveway, the residential area, and then another line closer to the.
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll put in a recommend, if we, if this plan commission recommends approval, we'll put a condition, a recommended condition on it, saying we would want the petitioner to work with staff on enhancing the landscaping and the screening for the residential properties to the north. Our recommendation passes to the village board. And they'll either accept, reject, or modify. But they'll be reading our conditions and they would be the ones that would then say, yes, we agree with the plan commission. We want this condition to be put on our approval. Then that way, the petitioner will have to work with staff and, and staff will have to be satisfied that, with the results. We don't get into design up here. We make recommendations and then petitioner would work with staff. So that's how it would go down, I guess, if that, if that helps kind of get on the process. So we're recommending body. It goes to the village board. And at that point, at the village board, I would recommend that you go to those hearings to make sure that all the conditions get added in and voice your opinion that, you know, you agree with planning and zoning's conditions. Okay? Thank you. Yes.
Sort of address some of the questions you had about the photometric plan?
Yes.
It is a requirement of the building permit, that they submit a photometric plan. They're allowed standards up to 25 feet in height, which is actually five feet shorter than our sign requirements. But that did make me think about Lot 2 and whether or not we would want a 30-foot sign on that property. And I think we may want to add a condition that would limit the detached signage to maybe 15 feet on Lot 2.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's going to start transitioning right into a residential area.
Correct.
And 25-foot, is that, that's a tall pole. You know, 20-foot?
They still have to meet the foot candle requirements at the lot line, which is just two tenths of candle foot at the lot line in the transition to the residential.
Okay. So that may, that may determine their pole height then?
Correct.
Yeah, so, okay. All right. I just know that sometimes it's less expensive to get a taller pole, but that means that the light goes out, spreads out a lot further and has a bigger impact. So we're looking for something that doesn't throw a lot of light off your sight. But, you know, we've got that restriction in there about the, the foot candles at the lot line. So that should handle the tall light standards. Okay. So if there's no other comments, questions to commission, we can move into closing comments from the petitioner. So any closing comments that you'd like to make in regards to your petition?
I just want to thank you for your time and appreciate the opportunity to present the project to the village. We look forward to making an investment in town. If the plan commission and the village board think it's an enhancement to the village. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, if there's no objections, then I'm also going to close the public hearing portion. So this will be last chance. Now it's going to be the commission's chance to talk, so.
I mean, my only other concern other than noise was, we already talked about radiuses. And so if there's a truck coming in and a truck leaving at the same time, is there enough space for both vehicles to navigate that area?
Do you want to come up and?
Just to clarify, I think you mean if there's a truck coming north on Ellsworth that's turning, or that's going to eventually get to the entrance, can a truck exit at the same time and not encroach on the northbound lane?
Yes.
So the radius would be such that a truck that is coming out and turning right doesn't go into the northbound lane? So whether there's a car or a truck or what have you, they shouldn't be in each other's path.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to move into discussion by commission members. Any discussion by commission members?
What are we looking at in terms of conditions? I've got signage on Lot 2 shall be limited to a maximum of 15 feet in height. Petitioner will work with staff to ensure appropriate landscape screening between the property and adjacent residential to the north. Is that strong enough language for that?
Do you want to be specific about that tree line?
Let's, let's take a step back for a minute and talk about, what do you guys all think about this as a use on North Avenue? Is it a good use for this area?
Yeah. I, I think so. I think when you look at what we have there and what has gone there, I mean, I'm nervous with retail on North Avenue because it is just such a highway. But that's a good thing to stop people, you know. Get gas, you pull in. It is underserved on that side of the street.
Okay.
I like it. I think they've, as far as some of the flow-through traffic, I think they've kind of went out of their way to make it to where the trucks can actually get in and get out without the aggravation. The only, the only thing that I would look at is if we do put maybe a condition to where, at least from where the truck entrance is to North Avenue, if you put to where there is no parking on that side of the street.
On Ellsworth.
On Ellsworth.
And I think that's a recommendation we would have to make for the board and staff to take a look at because it's going to be outside of a zoning issue. But I think we can make that as a recommendation that?
Well, in that way, there wouldn't, we wouldn't have any questions or issues as far as whether two, two trucks could get down the street or an automobile at the same time.
Okay. Everyone else think the use is appropriate?
I agree with Mike on that. And I agree with you on the greenage. I think there needs to be some trees there. That's a lot of open space there. Some more screening over there, yeah.
Okay.
Before we get to suburbia.
So it sounds like in, there's pretty much consensus that this is an appropriate use, given the area. You know, I think, I appreciated the explanation of what makes it innovative or different than a typical convenience store because it sounds like it's going to be more experienced and there's going to be more food associated with it and, and more upscale. And I think that's what we need. If we're going to get a gas station along there, I'm not going to be in, I wouldn't be in favor of just anything, the typical, just because of what our comprehensive plan is and what we've been trying to do along North Avenue. We've got a ways to go, obviously, to, to, you know, achieve all of the village's goals along North Avenue. But, you know, I want to see every development and everything that we have a, you know, make a recommendation about, reach a certain level. You know, we, I think we did a good job when we were talking with the outlots at the mall and some of the recommendations we made there to try to keep the quality good. Circulation, nice because, you know, we really have an opportunity here as these properties become available and the economy gets better to really enhance North Avenue and not, let's don't go backwards. Let's go forward and, and make sure that we have really good quality. Because we've started something, I think developers are starting to notice and to put some dollars in. And attractive developments always attract other good developments. So I like that about this. My only concern is that will that retail outlot really, you know, with those, with the lack of visibility, will they really be successful there? But if it's all real marketed as one piece and you have some visibility from one property to the other, I think it stands a chance, especially with the traffic. So that, that's my only concern. But I do think, I agree, the traffic's been figured out, the circulation. And a lot of times we see these and there's not enough room between the pumps and the building. And this all looks very comfortable. So I think it's a good use for that area. I think some of these recommendations are going to make it better. Anything else that?
No, my, my only real concern with the whole concept is I'm not super comfortable with the left turn onto North Avenue, but that's out of our hands and in the hands of IDOT.
Yeah.
And?
Above your pay grade.
Way above my pay grade. I mean, I could see at night, early in the morning, on weekends and stuff like that, it would be very easy and convenient. But during the AM and PM peak, it'd be incredibly dangerous.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Especially for a truck.
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay.
But that's IDOT, so. Yeah.
All right. Any other comments from commissioners?
I think this is well thought out. This packet landed with a thud on my front steps. And I appreciate all the information.
Yeah. Okay. If there's no other comments, yes?
Do we have any other conditions beyond the signage being limited to 15 feet on Lot 2, working on the landscaping, and the village investigating the elimination of on-street parking?
On Ellsworth.
On Ellsworth, correct.
I, I don't think so. Do we need to talk about radius at, between Ellsworth and North Avenue? It's really, it's outside of anything we can do. It's really IDOT. So there's no, there's no point in, and obviously, village board will, will hear this, see this transcript and hear that we talked about it, but it really, it's an IDOT issue. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. If that's it, we can have a motion.
All right. I will make a motion to approve application PZ 150009 for blue stone, single tenant properties. That includes, one, a two-lot subdivision at the northwest corner of North Avenue and Ellsworth Avenue is depicted on the platte subdivision entitled 150 East North Avenue re-subdivision prepared by Cupus Surveying Limited and dated December 20th, 2015. And, two, conditional use pursuant to Article 14.3.C.4 for automobile service station and 14.3.C.5 for automobile washing for a property located at 150 East North Avenue Penn 03-34-302-059 with the following conditions. One, that the site be developed generally in conformance with the preliminary site dimensional and paving plan prepared by Manhard Consulting dated December 22nd, 2015 and listed as sheet 3 of 9. Two, submittal of a landscape plan prepared and sealed by a registered landscape architect generally in conformance with the preliminary landscape plan prepared by Manhard Consulting dated December, we want to?
Change it to February 11th.
Dated February 11th, 2016. Three, no overnight parking of vehicles except for employees shall be permitted. Four, no washing or maintenance of vehicles or trailer shall occur in the parking lot. Five, no signage is approved as part of this request. Six, signage on Lot 2 shall be limited to a maximum of 15 feet in height. Seven, petitioner will work with staff to ensure appropriate landscape screening between the property and adjacent residential to the north. Eight, the commission requests that the village investigate elimination of on-street parking on Ellsworth adjacent to the property. With the finding of fact that such conditional use meets the conditional use standards enumerated in Article 6.11D of Appendix C of the Municipal Code, Village of Billapark Basic Zoning Ordinance.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Any questions or comments on the motion as read? Hearing none. We're going to vote by roll call. Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatto?
Yes.
Commissioner Olowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellows?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
And I two vote yes. With this, our recommendation passes to the village board. They'll either accept, reject, or modify. Thank you. Okay. We still have agenda. So we're going to keep plowing ahead here as they pack up. Any upcoming public hearings? See that we have none.
We have no public hearings upcoming. And as you may remember, with respect to the zoning ordinance update, funding from the state of Illinois has precluded CMAT from continuing discussion and moving on that zoning ordinance update. Until such time that the state does finally pass budget.
Okay.
I would just comment on that, that we did get Module 1 draft from Duncan Associates. It was very well done, very thoughtful. It was essentially mostly the administrative portion, special use, procedure, that sort of thing, and kind of a sampler of residential zoning. It was all pretty well done and it's kind of disappointing that state can't get a bunch together.
On more levels than, you don't want to get me started on that. Anyway, so.
Vote them out.
So, okay. Anything on village board actions and related matters to update us with?
I will tell you that on Monday evening, the developer of Garden Station was before the village board to talk about the Garden Station PUD. He presented a architectural plan, or an elevation, I mean, that was for discussion purposes. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion at the village board level, but there is work that he needs to do. He is seeking finance with help through a HUD program, but it's for market rate apartments. It would not be for low income or Section 8 or anything like that. It would be for market rate. The village did have its own independent analysis of the project. And it did, is very close to what the market should be able to bear with rents and sizes and things like that at the train station. So I think there will probably be additional work done by the developer moving forward. I know he has asked for some TIF assistance. What he asked for, I think, may be well in excess of what the village certainly may be willing to stomach on, on such a project. Obviously, there's other improvements around the train station that the village would like to do utilizing the TIF funding. So, you know, we're going to guard that jealously, I would say. Because we think, certainly with a good Garden Station project, we'd probably want to improve the train station, try and make it a more cohesive development overall, so.
It'd be nice to be able to put some money into the park now that we did that sidewalk and benches and everything, so. Yeah, so, okay. And is that going to get referred back to plan commission?
Well, because we approved that overlay district, if the development conforms to the design guidelines of the overlay district, there really would be no need to come back before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. So was the elevation presented different substantially than what we saw?
I would say yes. It was a very modern, very, what's the word? Modern and, and very flat, straight lines.
How about in terms of number of apartments, height of building?
Four stories.
Okay.
With parking underneath the building, approximately 230 units total. They'd have about 295 parking spaces, but they would also have a retail component as part of it. That's, you know, has always been discussed.
Okay. All right. It'd be nice to see something happen there.
Yes, it would.
Okay. Any commissioner comments?
Did you get us any presentation on file with that? That I could get a copy of and look at?
For, for Garden Station?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, if you could email that to me.
I will do that. And in fact, I'll email all the commissioners.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Great.
Okay. Quick question. There's some development here on St. Charles Road, but down towards Addison Road, something got fenced off here on the south side.
I think that's in Lombard.
That's in Lombard. It's west of Highview Restaurant. See, that, that area of St. Charles that is west of Highview on the south side is Lombard. It's Villa Park on the north side until you get to Westmore.
It's like, they're like puzzle pieces, the two towns. They're like puzzle pieces.
What's happening on Villa Avenue across from the Bird Sanctuary? There's a building that's torn down and there's...
One, two, three, yes. He was having significant structural issues associated with that building, and so he, he initially thought he wanted to partake in the facade improvement program that we have for businesses on South Villa Avenue, but as he got into it, he realized that there was a lot more problems other than just the facade, so he had to take all that down. And now he, because he wasn't anticipating all of that coming down, now he's got to rethink how he wants to rebuild. So, and that's where he's at right now, you know, looking at his finances and trying to decide what, what else needs to be done.
Is that a, is that a building on Villa Avenue?
Yes.
Is it one of them?
It's just north of Mahoney's Pub.
And he took the whole building down?
No, only the, the front half of it.
South of Mahoney's, right?
South Mahoney's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's hard to see because there's a plywood wall with a door. You know, you go past there 100 times.
We just got to remember that our zoning code in that area talks about setbacks and so on that we wouldn't want to see.
Well, he's been told that he has to do something in terms of rebuilding that comes right back up to...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what it does, because remember, we still have that problem.
Otherwise, otherwise, he's got a zoning violation.
Okay, great. Okay. All right. Anything else? Should we get out of here?
Yes.
All right. So adjournment is the next agenda item. All those in favor of doing so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're unanimous. We adjourn.